Leadership teams, tonight we're going to start with the high school and we'll work our way down to the middle school, taking a peek at some state level assessment data. So Benny, take it away.
You're going to be all right.
Okay, so, thank you very much. We appreciate you having us here tonight. Over the course of the next several minutes, the high school administrative team and our instructional leaders will present the data from 2020, 2021. It's been two years since we've been in front of you. We did not have School Day SAT in 2020, obviously, due to the shutdown, with COVID-19 has shut down two weeks prior to us taking the assessment in 2020. So, again, over the course of the next several minutes, we'll talk about our performance data, but we'll also talk a little bit about who we are as a school and our school profile. And as we typically do, we go back a five-year profile of East Haven High School and who we are. Our enrollment has remained fairly static and consistent over the last five years and even further back. We have hovered around 900 students over that time period. We were at 886 enrolled last year. We are at 872 as of today, but that's been kind of fluid the last couple of weeks as we're getting back into school. As you know, we are a community-eligible food, school lunch program with the direct certification numbers. Where 56% of our school population qualifies for free and reduced lunch under the direct certification program. Our ELL numbers, we have 66 students from 2020, 2021, which represented 7.4% of our school population. Our special education population, last school year was 143 students, or 16.1%, meaning that total was 23.5% of our student population made up both special education and ELL. Our chronic absentee numbers had remained around that 20% mark over the course of the last five years. Last year, we saw a spike up to around 27%, due in large part to some of the challenges that we experienced with remote learning and students attending regularly via remote learning platforms. Obviously, students that were placed in quarantine or ill and taking some days off due to the COVID-19 pandemic impacted chronic absenteeism as well. We do not have the four-year cohort graduation number from last year's graduation class yet. That'll be coming out shortly, but you'll see there that, with the exception of 1718, where we had an increase to 86.4%, we've maintained around an 80% four-year cohort graduation rate over the last several years. So, we wanted to start tonight by not just presenting our SAT data, but we wanted to also present our Advanced Placement Exam scores, AP numbers. And enrollment was down a little bit last year. You'll see, in parentheses, is our 21, 22 enrollment, but the first number indicates the enrollment in 2020, 2021, and the number of students who took exams. And these numbers are abnormally low. Some of our courses, such as AP Psychology, always had a high rate of students taking the exam. Some of the challenges that last year presented with remote learning and some other factors resulted in limited students taking the exams. But there's our numbers of students who took the exams and the scores that they reached. Generally, three or above, but typically fours or fives earn college credit. We'll talk a little bit about why some of those numbers are low in a minute. But we, please note too, those two bottom courses of Computer Science and Biology did not run last year. We have 19 students enrolled in an Advanced Placement Computer Science course this year, which is new, and Advanced Placement Biology. And we're happy to see those numbers back up because that course did not run. So dual enrollment courses, I think that's one of the factors that impacts the number of students who take our Advanced Placement courses. Many of our Advanced Placement courses here are taught by staff members who are also adjunct professors by definition at the University of Connecticut. So you'll see our statistics, our academic writing in particular, have high numbers of students who took that Advanced Placement class, but then also earned their University of Connecticut credit. So they earned dual credit, both here at East Haven High School and at the University of Connecticut, which is transferable to many universities in our area and definitely within our state. We also have many of our students enrolled in dual enrollment courses for both intermediate algebra, elementary algebra, medical terminology, and investigation in health careers. Those are gateway dual enrollment courses. And then, we have one student currently enrolled in Medical Spanish. We do have several students taking several Southern Connecticut State University courses this year through that program. However, only one of them has applied so far for the dual enrollment credit, both here and at Southern. Part of the issue with the dual enrollment piece, where we see the limited numbers of Southern Connecticut State University courses taught here is the lack of our students being considered, I'm sorry, our staff being considered adjunct professors at SCSU. And we're working to get more of our staff members certified through that program. The UConn requirements are pretty rigid. Staff members generally have to have a master's degree in that content area. So we have Advanced Placement US History, for example, and that teacher has taught that class for 20 years. But his master's degree is not in Social Studies or History, so he cannot get UConn dual certification to be a part of their teaching staff. And thus, our students miss out on that opportunity to get dual enrollment credit. I mentioned our graduation rates, but this is another slide comparatively to the state of Connecticut. In, well, that four-year period, I'm sorry, five-year period, our four-year cohort graduation rate has remained around that 80% rate. The state average is about 88%. It's been around that 88% number for the last five years as well. So we're a little bit below state rates with respect to four-year cohort rate. So we have some School Day SAT data to present. We're going to break that down with our instructional leadership team in a few minutes, but I wanted to give you the general numbers first. So our School Day SAT data, taken last March, we had 163 test takers here. These students on the School Day SAT compared to when they were both in 10th grade, which was actually October of 2019 before the shutdown, those students on the PSAT 10 scored a total mean score of 887, 454 in math, 433 in, I'm sorry, 454 in evidence-based reading and writing, 433 in math. And PSAT 11, the following year, which was again last year when we reopened school, we saw modest growth, 465 in evidence-based reading and writing, and 438 in math with a total mean score of 904. And then when those students went on to take the SAT last March, we saw your EBRW score increased to 479, your math score increased to 451, and our total mean score at 930. All right, and we'll compare that to both national averages and state averages. On the next slide, the Connecticut average, 509 for evidence-based reading and writing, 494 for math, for a total mean score of 1,003. The national average of 508, 496, for a total of 1,004. And again, East Haven High School at 479, 451, for, actually, that should be 430, 930 total mean score average. So again, we're about 70%, 70 points below both state and national average. That's where we were two years ago when we presented last time here. We clearly saw, as many people did, districts across the state, across the country, some of the effects of COVID-19 when we shut down back in March of 2020, and some of the challenges with respect to hybrid learning last year that we didn't have here, but those students who were classified as hybrid, which we'll go over in a minute, as well as remote and in-person learners. I'm going to turn it over to Jen Bauer, who's going to present the math results at this time.
Hello. Just a little, a quick summary reminder what's on the math section of the SAT. They have multiple choice and some grid-in questions. They have one test where they can use a calculator and one where they cannot. We do provide students with a graph and calculator to help them if they so choose. And then there's a couple of questions that will refer back to one single scenario that they need to answer a bunch of questions about. And oftentimes, that's where the science and social studies comes into the test. It will be a scenario that has to do with a scientific topic, but they do math questions related to that. It's broken down into three sections. We'll look at the different, each of the sections to see how the students performed. But basically, it's an algebra, which is a focus on linear equations and systems of equations. There's questions that are asking students to problem-solve and analyze data. And then there are some advanced topics for the students as well. So this is the percentage of students that were at benchmark for this particular cohort of students. What jumps out at me in this data is that when they were 10th graders, they, 25% of the 10th grade class was at benchmark, and then we shut down. And we, in the fall, they came back. Some of them were at home, some of them were with us, and our scores went down. That is not what we typically see. We do not typically see one group of students drop like that. So I'm, it implies to me that the pandemic, the shutdown, may have been impacting our student results. The state also saw a few drops at the approaching benchmark, but the state did not seem to be as impacted in their benchmark scores. But I do think it might have had an impact on ours. The state also supplied some data to us about what learning model the students were in. So in the 11th grade last year, we had 85 students characterized as being in school. And in order to be in school, you had to have been present in school for more than 75% of the days. The state classified students as hybrid if they were in school for anywhere from 25 to 75% of our school days, and there were 52 students with that classification, even though we don't, we did not technically have hybrid learning. And then students would be classified remote if they were out of school for more than 25% of the year, learning from home. So what you'll see then is, in the third column, is how many of those students participated in the test. So that was another little glitch last year. We had students that did not want to come in to take the test. For whatever reason, maybe they didn't feel safe, but they could not take the test at home. They had to take it in school. We had one makeup day that was allowed. So the petition, participation rates were a little lower. Typically, we're up at 95% of our students taking the test or higher. So clearly, there was an impact there. 72% overall, okay. And again, looking at the percent of students at benchmark, there is certainly a discrepancy between the students who were in school most of the year versus the kids who were either hybrid or remote. So again, suggesting that perhaps the, that learning at home was not the best scenario for math, math students. The three subs, subscores are the three topics that I talked about before. This is just a comparison of how our, we perform based against the state's mean scores. So we are slightly below the state's average in each of the areas. Our weakest area is Passport to Advanced Mathematics. We, I will say though, at this point in time, our, this current group of students, 52% of them are enrolled in a class that is above Algebra II, so they are getting the advanced math. We're hopefully going to start seeing some increases in that, but. And then also, last year, we did give the PSAT to grade 10, so looking ahead to the reports we'll be giving next year. Right now, our current, our current juniors who will be taking the PSAT next month and the SAT School Day in the spring, we've got 16% at benchmark as compared to the state of average of 35%. So again, that's a drop. If you think about the group we just looked at, when they were in 10th grade, 25% of them were at benchmark. So again, I'm, I'm feeling like the data's starting to trend towards COVID had an impact on our students. And the other interesting piece of evidence is only 132 kids came in to take the test that day out of 223. Again, we're typically up closer to 95%, but that was back last October. We had many students at home that were just not comfortable coming into the building to take the test. Correct. And this is how the 10th graders scored. They, just similar to the 11th graders, they're about a point below the state average on each of the individual areas. Okay, so on the reading section of the SAT, all reading test questions are multiple choice, and they're all based on authentic reading passages. So that was the change in the new SAT. When they're doing a science passage, it's from an actual journal like Scientific American, or they're reading an authentic literary text. Many of the passages are paired, where students have to draw conclusions across more than one text. They include informational graphics such as tables, graphs, charts. Students don't have to do math on those passage readings, even if they are accompanied by data, but they do have to draw conclusions from data. Prior topic-specific knowledge is never tested. Students don't have to have specific knowledge when they take the SAT. However, students that have a significant background in reading and have a lot of background knowledge clearly do better on the SAT. They have better critical reading skills, and they just have more knowledge to pull from when they're trying to kind of draw those conclusions and make inferences. So the reading test is part of the evidence-based reading and writing test.
And so to that point, the test is an interdisciplinary one, and it draws upon different content areas. When you look at the breakdown of the items on the test, one passage is from a contemporary or classic work from literature from the United States or globally. One passage or pair of passages is from the United States founding documents. And then, those are usually paired with other documents that stemmed off of the founding document and might even have had an impact in the world somehow. So the Constitution is often one that shows up on the test, the Declaration of Independence, some of the early founding papers from our country. There's usually a passage from one of the social sciences. Well, there's always one from one of the social sciences, but there might be one from economics, psychology, sociology. And then there are two science passages that appear on the test that deal with different foundational concepts in science. And like Lisa said, it's not testing students' prior knowledge in those content areas, but they're expected to use the skills that they learned in those content area courses to help answer their questions for those sections on the test.
The writing and language section is basically what we would think of as a grammar test. Students have to read sentences or passages, and they're given options for how to best fix something. It's where their vocabulary is tested. It's where their knowledge of sentence structure is tested. And oftentimes, those questions are not just which is the best choice here, but why did, why did a writer choose to put this sentence in this place in the paragraph? They're still requiring analytical thinking, even though it's a multiple-choice question. And similarly, they may include graphs or charts. The topic knowledge is not something students need to come in with. So our Class of 2022 Evidence-Based Reading, PSAT grade 10 in fall of 2019, we had 58% at benchmark and 7% approaching benchmark. And we similarly saw a drop from PSAT in grade 10 to SAT in grade 11. And we had 73% of our students that took this assessment, and that is very unusual for us. We've never really had difficulty getting to our participation rate, so this was a unique year. The state was at 59% benchmark, and our students in grade 10 were at 58%. I feel confident we probably would have made that. But it's, it's difficult to know when we had such a significant portion who did not test.
Like Jen shared earlier, the learning model results break down the participation and performance of students based on their attendance in school last year. So as you can see, in-person learners who are students who attended school at least 75% of the time in person last year had an 88.2% participation rate with 47.3%, meaning the benchmark. Hybrid learners who fall in the middle of the category with students attending school between 25 and 75% of the time had a 27.3% rate of earning the benchmark. And remote learners having 55.8%.
And that was an anomaly. That was the only place we saw that in any of our data. But our remote learners have the highest achievement at benchmark on SAT.
The size of the group was smaller too, though, so that could be a factor with that.
So our subscores actually, I think, indicate some of the work that we've done in the curriculum. The state means, mean scores and our mean scores are very close. And none of them are hugely discrepant from each other. So whether it's command of evidence, words in context, or expression of ideas, we're right in that ballpark on all of them in our mean score. So there's no big gaping hole in any of, any of the areas of the curriculum. We have some work to do in all areas, but there's no one place where it's like, we're just not teaching enough words in context. So our, our students at the mean are very competitive with the state at the mean.
That's also similar for the cross-test scores. Students also get scores for analysis in social studies and science based on their performance on the reading and the math tests from the questions that have passages from those content areas. So for actually both, both content areas, social studies and science, the district mean score was a 24, and the state mean was 26. So we were very close to the state mean for both of those.
So Class of 2023, again, we had 132 out of 223 students who took this test. And we had 11% approaching benchmark and 55% at benchmark. So not far off the state average for, for those scores for this year's juniors. So this is the group of students that will be taking the SAT in March or April. Okay. So for science, we have our Science Summit of Assessment, given in grade 11. It's a statewide mastery exam. We give it in the spring. Each of the test items begin with a real-world phenomenon and then engages students in an authentic task around that phenomenon. The item interaction types include a variety of things, multiple choice, edit task choice, there's a multi-select, there's a table match, they can graph, they can have an experiment simulation within the test, a design simulation experiment, and engineering design challenges. So there are, there's a lot in there for them. The Science Department here at the high school, in the year 2018, 2019, we did some rewriting of our curriculum in the courses 9, 10, and 11 to align to the new standards. And then, in 2019 was when the test was given for the first time. In 1920 was the first time we taught that rewritten curriculum. And then we went home in March 2020. So the, the content towards the end of the year didn't really get fully developed because students went home. And then last year, obviously, we were in the pandemic, and because of that, there were minimal student labs and hands-on activities, which we like to do science. That's how students really learn, so it was a struggle for our teachers. They did their best. They did demos. They showed videos. But without that student hands-on piece, I think that, you know, the teachers really miss that. So these are our scores compared, the only other time we gave the test was in 2019. So in that year, 200, all the students took the test, 215 of them. And we have Level 1, 2, 3, and 4. And you can see that 28% of them were either meeting or exceeding the standard. And then in 2021, we had 158 students take the test. That's not all of them. We did our best. We sent surveys out to see if the remote students wanted to take their test remotely, which was an option for the, for the science test, or if they wanted to come in, in another area to take it. The science teachers gave their, gave the test within their own science classrooms, which we felt was best because they know their students and the students would feel comfortable taking the test. We had makeup sessions, but we only got 158 of them to take it. We did see 47% of them at Levels 3 and 4. So with everything going on and the fact that it was only the second time that the test was given, we feel pretty, that we're headed in the right direction. And like the other presenters mentioned, they have it broken down by learning model. And you can see that the students that were in-person, 50% of them scored a 3 or a 4. We did not, this is supposed to be a, I believe, a 63. I don't know why it has a little highlight over it. The remote students, we tried to get them in. You can see 29 of them didn't test. So they, they did seem to score well, those of that, that were home and taking it remotely. But I just think that that was an anomaly as well. So when looking at the School Day SAT, we broke it out into various different subgroups. We looked at the top 10% of the class as they are ranked, and we saw that their total mean score was 1159. But then we also looked at the top 10% of students who were tested, and their total mean score was 1215. And we looked at the lowest 10% of students tested, and their mean score was 686. We then broke it down of high-needs versus non-high-needs students. It was 884 versus 971. Special ed was, their total mean score was 801, and our English learners, their total mean score was 848. We also have a note that our highest score earned by an East Haven High School student was 1360. And 51, which is 31%, of the students received a combined score of over 1,000. And so we had, just like everyone else was saying, you know, 20% of our population didn't actually take the SAT last year due to COVID. We only offered it in-person here at the school, and there was only one makeup day available to them. So it created a lot of complications for them. So here I broke out, or we broke out, high-needs versus non-high-needs students. And we can clearly see that there is a gap between our high-needs, which is in blue, and our non-high-needs students, which are in red. And high-needs students is a special ed student, an English language learner, a student who's homeless. And so all of those factors contribute to how well they're performing in school and on the SAT. So here we looked at our special ed students, our English language learners, and our non-high-needs students as well. There's clearly a gap between our high-needs students and non-high-needs again, and we broke it down, special ed versus ELL. And we're trying to, you know, help these students with different curricular changes that we're implementing here on the high school and working with them to improve their scores. And then we also looked at the DURG comparison. So for those of you who don't know, DURG stands for District Reference Group, and this is a classification system that the state uses. And it compares districts that have similar socioeconomic and needs of their students. And this is actually a much more legitimate comparison than when you look at, you know, surrounding towns or you compare it to the state. So all schools in our DURG had a mean score of 938. The highest-performing school in our District Reference Group got a mean score of 1,003. And then the lowest-performing school in our DURG got a mean score of 900. Now, when we compare East Haven to our District Reference Group, you're going to say that East Haven is scoring just about average compared to all of those other schools.
So we just wanted to discuss some action steps that are occurring at East Haven High School. Number one, we're using evidence-based instruction. So we're using supplemental evidence-based intervention programs to aid learning. So we're using the performance data to modify our instruction. We're providing a rigorous curriculum, as Lisa alluded to. Evidence shows that almost all students can achieve at high levels if they're taught at high levels. So our emphasis has been on skills that increase comprehension across the content areas. Thirdly, we've increased instructional time and we're supplementing. So struggling students often need more instructional time. And supplemental materials coupled with instruction in small groups and more repetitions. The emphasis has been on content-related skills and incorporating the social-emotional learning component, which is so important. We're monitoring progress regularly, so we're using formative assessments so teachers can pinpoint where students have gaps and intervene accordingly. We're trying to motivate and engage them more through the use of theme, technology, choice, and differentiation to sort of enhance their motivation and engagement. And as Maria said, we're returning to labs and hands-on activities. The sixth step, we're deepening professional development. So we're using a well-designed and clearly communicated teacher development process for driving measurable and lasting learning for students. So we've incorporated PLCs, data teams to review iReady, and increased collaboration time. And lastly, and most importantly, is we're trying to link our schools with, with our home because that cooperation between schools and parents and the community. because that cooperation between schools and parents and the community is one of the keys to closing the achievement gaps that Amy alluded to. You know, parent involvement has such a strong and direct impact on, on student achievement. And last slide, we just wanted to kind of, I just wanted to kind of show you what a multi-tiered system of support looks like. Okay. So my office has been tasked with student affairs and, and discipline. So that 80% on the bottom represents, you know, the behavioral expectations for all the students. And then it bumps up to that tier two, which affects like 15% of our students. Where there's more direct contact with them through check-ins, check-outs, social skills groups that may be run by our support staff. And lastly, that tier three, where there's individualized interventions. And this kind of carries all the way across both academically and behaviorally. So you can see how we target, we're trying to target students that need more support.
Okay, thank you. So, so I know we threw a lot of numbers at you, a lot of data. And, you know, it takes some time to digest this stuff. But I know as you listened and heard and, and saw, we just wanted to ask the board if they had any specific questions relative to any of the data that we presented, any of our action steps. You know, Anthony just mentioned professional learning communities and data teams is something that we haven't had here in quite a long time that we've brought back this year, working very closely with our teachers through academic and collaboration time, where they have actually common planning time, which was one of the things that was identified in our NIASK evaluation last spring as an area of need here that we're implementing at this time, that will really allow us to dive deep into student data, performance data, develop interventions and supports from there to, you know, to, to promote student achievement, both academically and then also to promote their social emotional wellbeing as well. So at this time, any questions that the board may have, I'd be happy to answer what we can answer. Yeah, 20 points from the actual benchmark? Did you want to answer that?
Yeah, it's typically in math at least, and I think it's the same for reading. The, the students who are approaching benchmark, their mean scores are about that little 20-point window below the benchmark scores. And typically a 20-point swing could be just as, you know, three, two, three questions.
I know I looked at the, the reading scores last, this school day group. We had 15 students that had a 470 and the benchmark is 480. So it was one question.
I think that it sort of reassures you that they're on track and almost there. And so small, more intensive efforts and some practice and elevating those kids to push them over that threshold is very important.
Yeah, I don't, and it was really small. But I know Nogatuck, Hamden, I don't know if you can read that. Bloomfield, Nogatuck, Stratford, Hamden, Torrington, Plainfield, Gilbert, Manchester, Killingley, Norwich Free Academy, Bristol, Vernon, Middletown, Putnam, and Groton. It's all demographic. It's all socioeconomic primarily, but it's all demographic based. I don't know if Eric, if you want to speak to it.
This is just curiosity for me. With the SAT scores and that sort of thing, a lot of schools now, they're not, you don't have to be as voluntary to submit the SAT scores. Are you finding out that not as many students are taking them just because they don't want to or?
We had the lowest test takers last year, probably than we've ever had. Students not taking them, you know, a second time or a third time after a school day. And it really decreased the leverage we have to get kids to come in and take school day because that's a free test. So families don't, there's, there's no cost incurred for any student to school day. And most schools were, I, I don't know of any schools that weren't test optional last year. So students are not required to submit SATs. And, and that's the case this year and they're saying probably next year as well.
Can you go back, can you go back to, to the slide where you look at the progression of the PSAT 10, PSAT 11, to the SAT? The more, the more practice and time that kids get to take these tests, the better they do. So this is one group of kids who got to take the PSAT in grade 10, the PSAT in grade 11, and then the SAT school day. And if you look down each column, you can see that help in developing. Now typically, most students will take the school day SAT, but then on their own, they'll take the SAT then. That didn't happen. And so that additional time of actually taking that test didn't create an instance where we can combine their best scores and report to you those test scores. This is strictly off this SAT school day, this one type assessment. So what we're a little concerned about moving forward is that our 11 graders this year did not have the opportunities to take the PSAT 10, PSAT 11.
Yes, they did.
They're taking the PSAT 11, but they didn't get to take the PSAT 10. So again, there are short chains, one additional practice leading up. But hopefully, looking forward, after the SAT school day, will be registered for an SAT on their own.
When we've had students who've taken the school day SAT and then sign up either to take the June assessment or the August assessment before they begin to apply, typically their scores go up 40 to 50 points each time. But again, we're not seeing that. We're seeing the first time as the only time in a lot of cases. So they take obviously junior year and then you may see some of your, your students who are not pleased with their score. Again, if they're applying to some of your higher lever, leverage schools, take it in June. And then we've offered an August administration here, the last weekend in August, that they'll take prior to then applying in October, November. Yeah, I didn't know if, I'm sorry, that's me. We did have seniors take, they, they did offer school day SAT in October of last year on PSAT day. I don't know the exact number. It was a really small number of 12th grade students last year who took the SAT. They offered it for free because those kids missed it. It was a, a pretty minimal number of students who took that test in October of last year.
That's not coming to school again. How many kids were enrolled during March 21st, February, March 23rd school year? How many kids were enrolled and how many of them went back there?
Last year, we had, I think there was a slide, we had 163 test takers and a round number of about 225 in the, in the 223 in the cohort. Nope. We did see the number though. 73% of our students took the test. So. It was about 20% who did not take it. I think it depends on the school that the students are applying to. You know, I, I know many schools are test optional now. But for some of those that are not, in the Northeast is super competitive with respect to students trying to get into schools. It may be the thing that divides a kid from getting into a program at a school. But, you know, with, with, I don't have that data to answer that question specifically. But I think we, it all depends on the school that kid's looking to get into.
But I think the message here is that pandemic, you know?
Or is it an actual measure? I mean, they're starting to allow kids to go into schools without SAT scores. And kids are, are successful and that measure isn't being considered in their admissions process. If kids are going there and they're successful, it begs the question, is the SAT score a really good predictor of their ability to enroll, stay in, and finish a four-year college?
Yeah. So this goes to your question because there are many schools now that beyond being test optional are going test blind. Where they're saying it's a more equitable admissions process to not look at the SAT and just look at the school profile and what happens to those kids once they enroll in college. So, you know, what happens to a, an East Haven High School student when they go to a four-year college? How likely are they to finish? And they're looking at other data as more important than SAT now. So the equity conversation that's been having, happening everywhere about everything is trickling down also to admissions decisions at schools.
And that, and that's why these, these couple of slides were so critical for us. Because if that's the case, and it's, it's something that our students need to be prepared with a resume, for, for lack of a better term, of courses that they've taken, which are predictors of student success at the secondary level. These courses are critical as well as students enrollment in some of our, our college level courses where they're prepared for and ready to take the, the rigorous college course load that's going to be coming for them in the, in the following year. It's often the dividing, the divider for, for admissions offices is how much community service or activity within a school community our kids have. So. Any other questions before we turn it over to Principal Doian at Middle School? Thank you very much.
All right. Good evening, Darcy Doian. For those who have not met, thank you for having me here. I'm loving my time so far at JMMSS and, and, and East Haven Public Schools. So I'm going to do a quick overview regarding our smarter balance assessment and our NGSS science assessment. So we're starting with some trend math data for grades six through eight. And when we look at the math data starting in 2014, 15, we noticed that minus one small dip in 1718, we had some nice growth going on. If we look at the comparison from 1415 to 1819, we were definitely moving in the right direction. And then unfortunately, as we all know, the pandemic hit. So taking that information and, and looking at what, what we are looking at for this year, we're looking at, at a total of a little over 22% this year, which is a dip. But again, with the pandemic, that's not surprising. When we take a look at our ELA performance, again, when we look at 2014, 15 to 2018, 19, although it is not trending like the math is, when we, when we compare that 1819 to 1415, we do see that we have a significant increase. So again, students were moving in the right direction. And then when we take a look at our 2020 to 2021, we're looking at about 39.6%. Again, a dip, but not surprising considering the pandemic. Taking a look at our sixth grade overall performance, we have district, the academy and JMMSS. I'm only going to speak to JMMSS. But our district average for sixth grade for meeting and exceeding the standard, it was 18%. And that's where we fell at JMMSS was at 18%. So for those who don't know, SPAC has scored on a four levels, level one, two, three, and four, with three and four being meeting and exceeding standard. And within those scores, it's broken down into claims and targets, which our instructional leaders will focus on a little bit more. And that's how these scores are derived. When we look at seventh grade, again, our district average is 32% for meeting and exceeding. And our JMMSS average was 31%, so slightly below that district level. We can see the number of students obviously at EHA is significantly different than that at JMMSS. For our math performance, again, we're pretty, even with the district. We had 20% district-wide meeting and exceeding standard with 19% of students at JMMSS meeting and exceeding standard in math. Taking a look at ELA, ELA, our district for sixth grade was 48%. And for JMMSS, we're at 34%, so slightly below that district average. For seventh, seventh grade, we see a little bit more of a gap between the district and JMMSS, where we have our 54% meeting, I'm sorry, our 42% meeting and exceeding and our 39% at JMMSS with 56% at EHI. And in eighth grade, we have, sorry, we have our 41% meeting and exceeding in ELA for our district. And we have 38% meeting and exceeding at JMMSS. For science, we couldn't disaggregate between EHA and JMMSS. We just have a district average. And so our district in 2019, we were at a total of 31% and 38% in 2021. So again, solid scores compared to the 2019 test. And like Maria had mentioned earlier, it was only the second year of the NGSS assessment. So Jen's going to step in for the learning model to talk to you about students who are hybrid compared to in-person and remote.
So we'll see the trend continuing in the lower levels as well that the students, students characterized as being in-home, I mean, in-person for, for the year did outscore the students that were at home. This is a test unlike the SAT that students could take at home. So you'll see the remote students, we had 142 students that were classified as remote in the sixth grade last year. 12 of them opted to take it home, 116 came in and took it. The others did not take it at all. But their, their percents were slightly lower than those students who were in school the whole time. Hybrid, that less than six means that the, the number was too small to statistically be able to report it. Because when groups are that small, I think we have privacy issues when we start talking about what their scores were. So these were the, the different breakdowns for the test in each grade level. The test is broken down into three sections. There's questions that are scored based on the concepts and the procedures. That's the straight-up math topics, how our students did in their math knowledge. Problem solving, modeling, and data analysis is interspersed throughout all different content areas within the sixth grade math curriculum. But this separates their ability to solve problems. And then their abilities to communicate and reason is also interspersed throughout the test. We, we, as, from a curricular level, of course, we're always trying to help students be better problem solvers and communicators. Curricularly, we really focus in on those concepts and procedures. So the sixth grade is doing a great job at applying and extending their understanding of number systems to the rational numbers. So that means they're, they're working with their fractions and decimals and making progress there. They are below proficiency, unfortunately though, in the algebraic expressions, inequalities, and equations, ratio concepts. The last, oh no, the quantitative relationships, that's statistical analysis. And that's unfortunately in a lot of our grade level areas. That's the last unit of instruction. So it's often after the test. So it's not always surprising that that's one of their lower proficiency levels. And then just something that we have implemented this year is the iReady testing. It's allowing us to start early and really hone in on students' areas of need. So we did just finish up our iReady di, initial diagnostic testing. This group of sixth graders is now in seventh grade. And it is indicating right now that about 14% of the students in the seventh grade, last year's sixth graders are on grade level or above. So we have our work cut out for us. This testing program though, will be giving students clear pathways to work towards hitting their targets. We have interventionists that we hired this year pulling students. We have students working in what's called the what I need class. And I think I talked more about this about next steps. But so, so this iReady testing is allowing us to really focus in on students' gaps.
Is this going to target individual students' needs?
Yes.
And then you call it what I need. But are the groups small enough?
Yes, there's.
Is there a group that is consistently taught every day?
Every other day, a student is in there. Well, we have two different things going on at the same time. We have What I Need for students we identified as needing extra interventions every other day. They will work either with the math or the reading interventionist depending on their higher level of need. There's typically 12 students per interventionist. Six will work with the interventionist on one day while the others stay back and work on their pathway in iReady. And then the next time they meet, the other six go work with the interventionist while the remaining six work on their pathways.
And do the people oversee the pathways?
iReady does it for them. Based on their test results, it designs the pathway for them.
The interventionists are monitoring the time.
And the interventionists, yes.
And what about all of the, there are times where, like, are you writing in the classroom? Like, the teachers, the kids?
Yes, the teachers are, the math and reading in particular, teachers are absolutely looking at the data, using it for small group instruction and targeted instruction. But then we also have the extra half hour built into the daily schedule. Every period will cycle through the year being extended, and all students, not just the students in WIN, also have a half hour work on math and reading skills once a day.
So just to ask, when you said not even for growth, are any, so is this also detect areas where certain students might need more accelerated programming?
Yes. It does, it goes through ninth, it goes through ninth grade, so every student's pathway is different. We do have students in the eighth grade that are working on things ahead of them of what.
You talk to the teachers about doing small group stuff, enrichment as well as intervention. So those students also have an opportunity.
So the learning model of results for grade seven, again, it does seem that the students that were in school for the majority of the time are outperforming the students who were at home. It is not easy to teach yourself math or to just listen to it even. So I think again, the results are showing us that. Seventh grade is doing a little better with the priority targets. The fact that the sixth grade had a weakness of analyzing proportional relationships, well, seventh grade, they're doing okay. So seventh grade, the focus really of the whole curriculum is proportional relationships. It's like the gateway to the rest of your math career. If you're not understanding proportional relationships, you're not going to understand linear relationships, and you're not going to be able to go move on to even more advanced. So it's a good sign that seventh grade, that was one of our higher-performing content strands. They're also still doing well with fractions, using properties of operations. Where the seventh grade needs some help is in solving real-life and mathematical problems using algebraic expressions and equations. And so the grade seven students from last year, they are now in eighth grade. So again, looking at where they stand right now today after taking their initial iReady diagnostics, we've got in the district about 23% of our students are on grade level or above. At the JMMSS, 20% overall. Grade eight, again, continuing the trend, in-person students outperformed the students at home. We did have 20 students take the test at home, and those numbers were too small to be able to present. Eighth grade is, has their targets at proficiency, working with radicals and integers, the Pythagorean theorem, but we do recognize the need to be working on the proportions, solving equations, evaluating and comparing functions. The last two bullets, congruence and similarity, and there's again another statistical topic. Again, those are end of the year. Last year, things did slow down quite a bit. We maybe didn't cover those two topics as much as we could have. We did give iReady to the high school students as well. They don't really have pathways per se unless they are below ninth grade. So they're working on pathways in the algebra classes perhaps at the high school in the ninth grade English classes. But the majority of students, if they scored above ninth grade, they're not going to have a pathway. But we still use it as a diagnostic tool. So we gave it to our current ninth graders, last year's eighth graders. And we've got 25% of our students that are on grade level or above in the ninth grade. So that would indicate then that 75% of them do have pathways that they have already begun working on to start to fill in those gaps as well. So my next steps, I just, I did kind of already tell you about them. We have the What I Need period. It's built into the student schedules. They work on their prescribed pathways. And then an interventionist will pull small groups every other day. We are using iReady to help us monitor students' needs and provide resources for growth for all of the students. We have an extra half hour dedicated to math and reading supports in all courses. So even our Unified Arts teachers are stopping and spending a half an hour supporting reading and math in their subject area. We will continue to use the priority instructional content in math. This was a document put out last year to help try to fill in the gaps of closing in March of 2020, knowing, recognizing that the students were, had a lot of gaps. So we have ways that we can combine topics, eliminate some topics that are not quite as important as others, and which ones really need to be emphasized to accelerate learning. And we're going to continue to use the Sback interim assessment blocks. I know a couple of years ago, we came and reported to you how we were using them. We tried to use it as an instructional and an assessment tool so students become familiar with the types of problems they'll see and so that we can identify the priority targets.
Doesn't iReady come aside a little bit better now?
Yeah.
Getting better. We've moved forward, right? Because I would like, we're going to see these, maybe this is too early, I can make it. So we're going to see the next phase, the mid-year benchmark.
Yes, they take it again.
From the beginning.
Yes.
Third mark to the end.
Yep.
I want that.
They take them in January.
So as with math, we have the learning model for grade six ELA, for the ELA Sback. The performance for students on that test actually was pretty consistent across the learning models, which was kind of unusual. That was the only test where we saw it. The remote, hybrid and in-person learners all scoring approximately similarly.
So claims and targets for ELA include reading, which encompasses, I think, nine different areas. Listening and then the writing is research and writing, and then research and inquiry are combined. So the claims and targets are really interesting because there are students that fall into this approaching, it's approaching standard, who have actually met the standard in certain claims or targets. And they don't tell you which ones actually met the standard versus which ones are close. So it's difficult to know. It's above and then it's at or near. And we have a huge number of kids that are at or near, and we don't really know which ones are at and which ones are near. They don't disaggregate the data that way. So what we do know is that when we look at our claims across the board, we don't have, similarly to SAT, huge places where our scores are very low. Most of it, most of our claims and targets, they report as equal sign, which means that their performance on one claim or target is very similar to their performance on other claims and targets. And that was true across the reading claims. The good thing is that our curriculum is addressing standards in a comprehensive manner. Students are performing with relative consistency across the curriculum. Opportunities for growth in grade six are reasoning, making inferences across texts, word meanings, tier two and three word meanings. This is the high-leverage academic vocabulary, which we need to do a better job of incorporating across the school. Analyzing the purpose of text structures. So again, sometimes the questions will ask a student not just to look at how a text is structured, like, is it chronological? But why is this paragraph at this place in this passage? They have to analyze the purpose of the decision that the writer made, and then evaluating information and sources. So that's something, we've worked with the media specialist. We've already talked to her about doing some additional lessons on evaluating websites and evaluating sources to understand reliability and validity of information. That's something that's tested. And again, the number of students in the approaching category indicates students are moving towards mastery in many areas. So we also looked at the grade six, the students that were in grade six in 2021 and their performance on the iReady diagnostic. And the one grade below, I think, are a lot of our students that would probably be early grade level had we not had so much learning loss last year. But these numbers are hopeful to me. The three or more grade levels below are obviously concerning, and those students, our students that we had used predicted that they would need that WIN time, and they are working with the interventionist.
Moving on to grade seven for the learning model, we see 55.3% of students categorized as in-person. It's scored at the three or four level, whereas hybrid and remote were slightly lower than that. 33% who were categorized as hybrid scored at three or four, and 43.3% who were categorized as remote did. And similarly to the sixth grade performance, in seventh grade, we don't see any significant areas where students were performing lower than others on that test. Lisa mentioned how we see symbols when we look at the reports, and they have, it's a plus, I think, a check, an equal sign, or is it a minus? An X, great. And when you look at the report, you see equals all over it, which actually is not a bad sign because it means that there are no striking areas that students are really not performing well in. And it helps us to pinpoint areas where we do see any of those, any of those notations that might show up somewhere. But in terms of our strengths for grades, based on the grade seven performance, like Lisa mentioned, we are integrating these skills across the curriculum in different content areas. Students are performing with consistency with these skills in different courses across the curriculum. And interestingly, analyzing text structures and features was a strength for grade seven, whereas it was a weakness for grade six. So, yeah, I know, that was the same as math. For growing, areas to grow in grade seven, practicing analysis and inferential skills with texts is something that we identified, particularly when listening to texts. That was one area that we noticed was a weaker area for students across the tests. On the Sback test, they'll sometimes get a video that they have to watch and then answer questions based on it, or they'll have to listen to an audio version of a story or an informational text and answer questions. And we want to try providing students with more practice with that in different courses so that they are able to develop in those skills. Like Lisa mentioned, tier two and three vocabulary, which is the more academic and content-specific vocabulary, is something that we're trying to focus more on since that's an area where they struggled as well as narrative techniques.
So iReady scores, again, I feel like we're a little bit of a broken record. The performance is very even across the grade levels. Early and mid to above grade level in this grade eight diagnostic, we had 26% of our students and 21% that were one grade level below who we think will probably have a very good chance of catching up. It is, it is very difficult to know, but these students were on track to be doing a lot better this year than this shows us, so.
Grade eight learning model, I'm feeling like a broken record too because it's the same, the same report as with the other grade levels. We see 55.1% of in-person students scoring a three or four. The hybrid and remote categorized students scored slightly lower with 44.7% and 23.9% for each of those groups.
Claims and targets, I think, I mean, you can read the numbers. I'll talk to you a little bit more about some of the other things we notice when we do the IABs or when we look into the data on Smarter Balance for claims and targets. There are certain question types that our students have difficulty with, and this is also true when we look at the PSAT item analysis. There are two-part multiple-choice questions on Smarter Balance where students will have to identify what's the central idea in this passage. And then after that, the follow-up question is, what's the best piece of evidence that supports that central idea? They don't get partial credit. So if they get one part correct and the other part wrong, they get the whole thing wrong. And it's difficult to know sometimes where they're falling down. The evidence oftentimes, there's two or three pieces of evidence that all apply to that central idea. They have to choose the best one. So they're very discreet, challenging, close-reading skills that students have to demonstrate. There's also one item type that we really struggle with, which is a select-all that apply, where students will be given a question and there might be eight checkboxes. And they have to choose as many right answers to that question as are in the list. So if there are four that are correct and they choose three, they get no credit for that. So if there's, you know, if they get all the correct answers but one additional, they don't get credit for that question. So practicing those questions is really difficult because it's just the passage that they get. And students can very much be on the right track and not necessarily get credit for that question. So this is, these are some of the things, you see those questions with themes or central ideas, and analyzing information within texts.
So we administered the iReady to grade nine students at the high school, and these were the initial results of the baseline diagnostic. So we see 10% of current ninth graders, mid or above grade level, 11% early on grade level, and then 27% one grade level below, 7% two, and 45% three. And we still have some students who are finishing up. We had a good number today and tomorrow that are completing the diagnostic.
So our next steps, we are working with the interventionists to determine and implement strategies that promote growth and achievement. We're working with our teachers in team meetings and in grade-level team meetings. We're using iReady tools to screen, remediate and progress monitor. We gave access to iReady reports to all teachers in both buildings actually so that all teachers can see the reading performance of their students. Because this isn't just a reading or a math or a social studies issue. If you're giving directions, multi-step, complex directions to a student in health class or Spanish, if the students are not necessarily at grade level for reading, you may have lost them before you even get to the learning piece. So we're trying to make everyone more aware of the needs that kids have so that everyone can work on supporting them. We're utilizing the extra half hour to practice key math and reading skills and support students' continued growth, and that's in all classrooms, as Jen mentioned.
And I can speak to that too from a social studies perspective. So in my department, the social studies teachers are also looking at the iReady data. And so they're able to pull reports showing students' baseline results as well as something called an instructional grouping report that categorizes students into different groups that might be helpful to work together with for different areas that the initial test targeted. And so they're able to pull students from those groupings during the extra half hour to work on them on content-specific skills that line up with the reading or the math types of skills that they would be expected to master by the end of the year. Interim assessment blocks we use also in the different content areas. So they primarily take the ELA ones in social studies and language arts classes. And Lisa and I try to break them up so that we're doing them at different times of the school year that flow logically when we're teaching those related skills in the courses. So if we're doing a unit in a social studies class that's more research-related, they might take the research interim assessment block at that time of year. And they actually have come out with more targeted assessment blocks this past year that give us even more specific data related to the claims and targets with the Sback. And then align instructional moves with different resources that we use such as Achieve the Core, which some of you might be familiar with. They have a lot of great free resources that are all lined up with the Common Core State standards and provide ready-to-use materials for teachers with, that they can use in class with students.
Okay, so our eighth graders also take the NGSS assessment. At the middle school and the academy really, in 17-18, we worked toward rewriting our curriculum to align to the standards by utilizing the FOS program. We have FOS in the elementary school, and at that time, we thought it was appropriate to roll that up for consistency for students so that they, they come to the middle school. to roll that up for consistency for students, so that they, they come to the middle school level, having that experience in FOS, and it's just an easy transition, as well as FOS itself realigned to the new standards. So, it was a nice opportunity for us to get, like, you know, two bangs for our buck. In 2020, obviously, the students went home due to COVID, and then again, like I said, last year, there were minimal hands-on experiences for students. And so, Darcy did show the slide of our overall performance, and I don't think I mentioned the areas of strength or growth similar, they give us some similar information in grade eleven as well. So, this is very helpful for us, since we're still tweaking and working with our new curriculum. It's nice to see where our areas of strengths are, and it's also nice to see where there are some areas of growth, so that we can go back into those curriculum documents, see where we might need to bump up some of our content. FOS offers a lot of material, so teachers have to work hard to pick out those priority standards that are the most important, and so this really gives us a focus on what those might be, and so we can look back and work toward bumping those up. And then this is the learning model. Again, that trend that the in-person students performed at a higher level. And then the next steps, I know that everyone's talked about those extra thirty minutes being dedicated to the math and reading, and our science teachers are also working during those thirty minutes. They have the iReady reports, and they're also able to, during that time, pull small groups of students who might be struggling with some science skills. We have our science and engineering practices, so students need to be able to make a claim in science and support it with evidence and reasoning, and so it is a time for them to be able to pull small groups of students to work on those specific science skills, which is great. The return of labs and hands-on activities, they're already in the lab, so if you talk to kids, they should be able to share, six through twelve, that they are back in the lab, and they're happy to be there, so we are excited about that. As I mentioned, we can analyze our curriculum and work on those areas for growth. We are trying to kind of get a refocus back to those science and engineering practices, those are those skills, and we really want to make them, make our students aware of how important they are, because they, they transcend, no matter what class their science class they're taking. So, we really want them to focus on those. And then we also give the interim assessments in science, and I don't think I mentioned this with the eleventh grade, but we've put them in three times per year. So, students have access and will have practice, per se, with those challenging question types three times a year, which is great, so.
Do they get the feedback, though?
Yeah, so the teacher will then, after they take the test, they can pull up the test in front of the student, walk them through the whole thing, discuss where they may have gone wrong. A lot of times, the technology is an issue, like, students don't understand how to manipulate the graph, or how to make the graph online. So, doing those is really important, because it does give them that practice, so that that's not an issue, that they could just test their knowledge and mastery.
A gemet in equal.
Right. I think that's the end.
So, I think that this is all really important information when we look at SBAK and NGSS. One of the big pushes this year at JMMs is for us to be working with teachers every four days through a process of looking at individual students, not only at this type of assessment, but what they can actually produce in the classroom. We always talk about triangulating our data. So, just because we have an iReady score that says something, we want to make sure that that's matching what we're seeing in other areas, and that we're providing for those students what they need. Another piece that, that we haven't discussed is the social-emotional piece, that we know has to come first in order for students to be successful, and that's something that we're really looking at this year at JMMs as well. We do have our restorative practices coach who's in classrooms, we have our instructional coaches in classrooms, and we're continuing to work with teachers during that time that we're meeting with them, to, again, look at individual students' needs, whether it's a social-emotional need, or whether it's an academic need, to make sure that we're putting supports in place to support all of those students. So, pulling all this together with the support of the instructional leaders and all of the phenomenal data that we have, the additional thirty minutes, and putting these action plans in place, we expect to see some significant growth between now and January, so, fingers crossed. Any questions?
We'll be getting an update on that assessment of this extra time we are spending in January.
So, that will all really show up through the iReady scores. When we look at those, that's going to be, they're going to be impacted by that additional thirty minutes, in many ways. So, whether it's that children are working in small group with a teacher, that's still going to be impacted in the growth that we're seeing in iReady.
So, tier one and two could be in the classroom, right?
So, tier two essentially should be over and above what students who are receiving tier one are getting. So, tier one is what everybody's receiving, and then tier two is over and above, and then tier three is more intensive than tier two.
So, who sees the interventionist, tier three?
So, right now, during that win period, students who need additional support are seeing the interventionists. Yeah, yeah.
Tier three would be marked every day.
Every day.
And that's the every other day, right?
Yes. And really, what has to happen for us to be able to give that more intensive instruction is to do an overhaul of our scheduling and our staffing and whatnot, so we could say that, you know, we're going to give kids five days a week, but we're just not set up for that right now. And although we know that that's the need, that's something that we will look at, and actually have already started looking at for next year.
I greatly appreciate that. I do think our class time is just awfully short. By the time you get them in, you get them settled, they're off, they're off, and they leave. I've seen great progress with some semi-block scheduling with middle school, that, you know, with proper, it really does work well, and I would have never said that, having not been part of it. I would have said, you're crazy. I mean, seriously, because I've taught for too many years, and I've seen it be very disruptive.
I did implement block scheduling in my last building. In my last job, I had rewritten the master schedule in order to have those tier two and tier three supports in place, and one thing that we did was, we went to a block schedule in order to provide that additional time for instruction, and to not be losing that passing time. And pros and cons, but we did see, we did see some good, good things come out of it, so I agree.
Thank you.
It's hard for some kids, it is.
I understand.
But when we truly look at it, our younger kids, first, second, third grade, they're sitting all day in a classroom mostly, right? And then we get to the older grades, and oftentimes, people think kids can't sit, but I think it depends on how we're structuring our classroom. So, if we have kids moving around, if we're doing small group instruction, which is what we're working on our teachers to be able to do, so.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, other questions?
Good job, everybody. Appreciate your time here tonight.
Wonderful presentation.
Thank you. Did anybody have any questions? Okay. I'd like to thank all of you for, for being here tonight, and look forward to hearing from you again.
Thank you.
Close the heart of this evening's meeting, let's begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Melissa, can you do a roll call attendance, please?
Tia De Palma?
Here.
Jennifer De Longo?
Here.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio? Tom Hennessy? Tom Murtaugh?
Here.
Erica Santiago?
Here.
Jack Stacy?
Here.
And Michelle De Lucia?
Here.
Thank you, Melissa. All right, begin tonight, just making a little announcement, I know we've had some inquiries about the YouTube channel, however, there were some changes made between Google and YouTube. I believe many districts were affected, so right now, both our school YouTube channel is down, as well as our athletics channel is down, and they just have to work with YouTube to try to straighten that out. And also, excited to say, I was just able to sign a new contract for the custodians and security guards, right? This evening, I went down and did a four-year contract, so that's a little bit of good news. That took a bit of time to complete, so that's just a little update there.
Thank you.
And I am trying to think, I don't think there's anything else this evening. I know everyone was here to be able to see the scores this evening, and I just want to stress how this really is just one factor in one little snapshot of our children, and I hate to see them equated to just a test score, and that seems to be a common occurrence lately, and I think we all need to give them a little bit more credit. And on that note, I'm going to ask if subcommittees.
Last question, you say custodian, contracts for whom?
Custodian and security guards.
Oh, security guards, sorry.
Subcommittee?
Personnel?
Ditto to what you just said. And that's all I have. We have some new hires later.
Okay. Athletics?
Yes. If you'll notice, their fences are going up around the baseball field, started today. That'll be completed in the next week or so. I want to report on this middle school volleyball intramural program has taken off. Over fifty students applied to join. This is being, working in conjunction with Liz Frank, was Pam, and it's just been an actual success, success program. And finally, just a note, on November twelfth, the football game versus Weston has been deemed Veterans Night in the past couple of years. Mr. Verderam has done a wonderful job in honoring veterans. He brings in the National Guard and some others, and asks all veterans from both teams in the stands to come down and participate in on-field exercises. So, that'll be November twelfth, which is.
November twelfth?
Yeah, November twelfth. So, Veterans Day is the eleventh. November tenth is the Marine Corps birthday, ooh rah. The eleventh is Veterans Day, and the twelfth is, will be Veterans Night at East Haven High School Football.
Is it a Wednesday night?
No, it's a Friday night.
It's a Friday night.
Well, it's a Friday.
You better not.
We're calling a special Thursday night, right?
It's, it's, Veterans Day is usually on the day, November eleventh.
It's always eleven, yeah.
It's always an eleven.
Eleven, eleven, eleven.
That's Charles' birthday, yeah.
The eleventh day of the eleventh month at the eleventh hour.
You got it. And then is it, that's a Thursday issue.
That would be a Thursday, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Erica? Nothing for policy, and nothing for community outreach.
All right, so we will move on to the superintendent's report. Thank you, everyone.
RJ is going to just give the cafeteria a report, the senior and the minor report.
So, we normally go through this during subcommittee, but due to our presentation, I'll just give it to you now. This shows our figures for the summer months of July and August. Summer school began second week in July to our, right into August, that's why you'll see increased non-numbers from August compared to July. If there's any questions, just let me know. The support for the summary is directly behind.
Any questions?
No.
And Jen is not with us this evening, so is there, do we have an assistant superintendent report, or?
No.
All right. So, that moves us along to approval of meeting minutes from a regular meeting on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second. I defer to Ms. De Longo.
Any questions or comments? If not, I will ask for an iVote for all in favor. All in favor approve the meeting minutes for September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries? All in favor? Which brings us to number five, our audience of citizens. Is there anyone here who, right? No, that's.
Yes, you're right.
Anyone here who would like to speak this evening? Did anyone, not online, no one joined in online? Who would have had some more interest with the presentation? Any questions, comments? Anyone? All right. Oh, so, yeah, it's a nice call. Okay, we're moving on to new business. Six point one, discussion and possible action on the approval of purchase orders over seven thousand.
I make a motion that we, oh, yeah, approve the purchase orders over seven thousand.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Everyone's, no? Just going to wait one second, because I know usually we'll go and then.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
How come we're not on the consent agenda anymore?
Because we didn't have a subcommittee meeting. Oh, you don't have a question about the purchases? Okay. All right. So, then, at that, on that note, why don't we do an iVote? All in favor to approve the purchase orders over seven thousand, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries? Which brings us to six point two, discussion and possible action on the approval of invoices for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of one million, four hundred and seventy-three thousand and sixty-two dollars.
One thousand.
Wait.
One thousand.
Oh, my gosh.
I think this is the first time we ever heard of this, a thousand dollars.
I know, that's why I thought you guys missed the number. I was, okay, one thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-two cents. Okay.
We're closing out the year.
Closing out, all right.
Whatever's left.
Okay.
I want to save that number. Can I make a motion?
Yes, go ahead.
Make a motion that we approve the fiscal year of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of one thousand, four hundred, seventy-three dollars and sixty-two cents. We approve the invoices.
Second. Any questions or comments? No, then at this time, I'll ask for an iVote to approve invoices for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of one thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-two cents. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries? Six point three, discussion and possible action on the approval of invoices for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of one million, fifty thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and forty-four cents.
I make a motion to approve for one million.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, three hundred and thirty point four, four cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
More, I have comments.
Okay.
I did have several questions, and I want to thank RJ and everyone who answered those questions prior to us going into this meeting. Just a note, I saw Amazon cart for eighteen hundred dollars, and I thought they bought a cart to push them around for eighteen hundred dollars, and I was questioning it, but I realized now that's not what it was. In the monitors, I had a question, but thank you for explaining that. I do have a request. When I'm going through these figures, okay, and RJ said it's put in some kind of alphabet order, but we'll have, like, six thousand dollars for a special ed student tuition at Aces, and that, is there, is it possible to get those all lumped, one after the other, so we get a better idea as to the, you know, rather than having to look through forty-five pages to find all of them? Can't we just get special ed, Aces, special ed, whatever, high road?
We can manually get a report quick.
Well, it'd still be alphabetically, right? But just all the special education fees.
Yeah, but just all one after the others, so that you can get a total without having to try to.
The vendor detail listing gives you a detailed listing of all vendors paid in this two-week period, so we can't just pull out systematically.
Are they coded?
No. So, we can manually go pull, just pull those onto an Excel spreadsheet and give that to you separately.
Thank you. That ends my.
Is there any way to code them in the system, so then you could just run a report? I was just thinking, to make it easier, if you just, every time you go in, just put a code.
If we can tag them, we'll systematically run it if we could.
I mean, either way, you're going to have to do diligence, because everything is not going to be put into categories, it just isn't.
That's fine.
Well, I know what he's saying, like, when we get the budget report, right? When we go over the budget, everything's kind of categorized, yeah, yeah.
I understand it.
Yeah, I understand it as well, and it would be probably very easy if we had, if everything was coded, but. We'll get there soon.
Thank you.
All right.
I just, sorry, I just had one question. One of them, I answered my own question, but the, on page 26, I'm assuming that the golf cart repairs, that is for the athletic? Is there like a meeting, is that go on their meeting and schedule? Is that part of a meeting and schedule for them?
So, it is now because with the new field, there's a new sweeper that goes on the field to groom the field, and it takes the rubber and anything that drops into the field. It pulls it up and recycles it. So, with that being new, we needed to get a golf cart up and running for public works to use.
Right.
To do the field. So, now that we're doing that, we are actually looking into, to make sure that the golf cart can actually, long-term, sustain the use of that sweeper.
Well, that, yeah, that's what I was wondering because for the cost of the, just the batteries alone, I know just because I have a couple of golf carts myself.
Correct.
Just the thought of possibly getting something that's more durable and...
So, the golf carts are all in the same, what we're being told is there's one rotor in the back that drives the whole cart, and we may need to go to like the second level, just like a Gator. So, we've had golf carts in the past that athletics have used for the trainers. So, what we've done is to get the field operational now, we've just changed the battery so it's functioning now. We just don't know how long that will last us.
Can we get a price on?
We are, I'm in the process now, as we speak of. There's just not quantity. We do it like, just like everything else, we can get prices, but it's a matter of getting a price for a product we can actually purchase and get.
Right, yeah.
So...
Go on the wait list. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? No? All right, then at this time, I will ask for an I-vote to approve invoices for 2021, 2022 in the amount of $1,050,330,44. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carries. Brings us to 6.4, discussion and possible action on the approval of the use of William B. Meyer for document storage.
All right, so in your packet, if you could all pull out item 6.4, there's an Excel spreadsheet printout here, I can walk you all through this. So, our office was doing some digging into some bills, looking to find some cost savings and cost efficiencies, and we noticed we were using a document storage company, Iron Mountain, and the prices seemed a little steep, so we went to the state bid list, did a little searching, and William B. Meyer was on the state bid list. They do all of this work for the state of Connecticut, other municipalities in our area. So, we reached out to them, and they provided us with a cost analysis of what their prices would be in accordance with Iron Mountain. I've actually provided actual invoices to them, so the numbers that we see here on the annual savings section is actually based off of our current usage. These are not estimates. So, to start with that background, the top half is the pricing structure here. You'll see the Myers price compared to the Iron Mountain price and the savings of what we would have if we switched over to William B. Myers. The largest factor in here is the carton storage per cubic feet. Myers charges 11 cents per cubic foot while Iron Mountain charges 56 cents per cubic foot, and we have 9,391 cubic feet of storage currently. So, that's our largest driver in the change. There is, Iron Mountain's contract was also evaluated, and there is a fee of $4,500 to break the contract, and that happens at any point in time. Whenever we choose to break this contract, the fee of $4,500 still exists. William B. Meyer will absorb that cost, but for two years, they'll have a temporary price of 32 cents rather than that 11 cents. So, for two years, it'll still be below the 56 cents we're paying now, but it'll be slightly higher to absorb some of that contract cost. So, if you go down that list, receiving and entry, carton retrieval, basically, the facility will store our cartons. When we call to retrieve a box, somebody goes out to our garage and storage bin, pulls that box for us, brings it to us, we use it for X amount of days, we send it back. So, that's the carton refile, the file refile, the transportation and handling of getting us those files back and forth. So, based on that, the annual savings calculation below, the annual amount is what our current bill states for the last three months of our current year. 90, where you see the 93, 91 cubic feet, we've refiled 43 cartons, we've retrieved 14 cartons, you know, we've moved 58 cubic feet for transportation with those 12 trips. So, for years one and two, there's where our cost analysis is. As of right now, we're paying per year 7,163 to Iron Mountain, the first two years of this contract. If we made the, if we made the switch at that 32 cent rate to absorb the contract, we would be $3,619 with Myers, so there'd be an approximate annual savings of $3,543 in years one and two. And then when that price drops down to 11 cents, year three on, expecting that our usage remains the same, we would see close to $5,500 per year in savings. So, it's my job to bring this to you. We can save money. It's just, they're on the state bid list, so I don't think we have to go out to bid for this because of that, the state uses them. The transportation from our facility now, which is in Meriden, to this facility, which is in Stratford, William B. Meyer does for free of charge, we will go and examine where our documents are going to ensure that they are safe and they're all being transported, and we will, there will be a seamless transition. I think the time takes anywhere from four to six months because we need to break a contract with Iron Mountain, so it's not something we can do and it's done tomorrow. But I'm here tonight to present this to you with possible action. If you'd like to take advantage of these savings, I can act on this and start the process.
And now, I know you're saying they're on the state bid list, but I just want to ensure that it is for the same exact services. Okay.
And this says that Iron Mountain prices increase January 1st.
Every January 1st, Iron Mountain has a percentage increase, so these prices are based on current pricing right now, based on our last three bills.
Now, is there anything that is going to give us that lock-in price for William B. Meyer's after that two-year absorption, like...
This is their standard because they're on the state bid list with the state of Connecticut.
Okay, so that's just their flattery.
Prices are stated that way, and they can't change.
No, no, I understand that. It's going to drop from the 32 cents after they absorb the contract fee. That's what I was wondering. I wanted to just see if it goes up after that. Okay.
What, is there a number of years that we're contracted with Iron Mountain?
No, it's a year-to-year contract.
Sorry?
It's a year-to-year contract.
Even if you don't renew it, you would get charged?
If we break it, correct.
But if it ends?
It's ridiculous.
When does it end?
February.
So, even if we let it expire?
There's a contract rate, so they get you going both ways. It's either 45 months or to break the contract, or to get the, if you let it expire and extract your belongings, they charge you that price to get them out of their facilities. So, it's either we break early and get it, or they're going to charge us to get them out.
All right.
So, it seems logical to just start the savings early rather than let them go.
We actually started now. We probably wouldn't break, we probably honestly wouldn't get there until the end of our contract anyway. Because the process takes that long to set up.
Understandable.
So, is it the same thing with Meyer, the contract would be year-to-year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is not saying we're locked into three-plus years.
Right.
It's just showing if we did this for three-plus years, what the cost savings would be.
Do they have one of those stipulations as well as that you have to pay to break it or pay to...
They do not.
They do not?
They do not.
It's good to know.
All right, I'd like to...
The benefit of them is they're on the state bid list, so everything is negotiated with the state, so rates are stated. There's no contract, like clauses to get out of contracts. It's pretty straightforward with the state, and we would just be hopping on that same price structure.
Sounds good. Yeah, because we talked about possibly regionalizing, right, for supplies?
For supplies? Yes, we haven't done that yet. We've discussed it, but haven't looked further than that.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we enter into a one-year contract with William B. Meyer, Meyer for document storage.
My second.
Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, say aye to approve William B. Meyer for document storage.
Aye.
Aye. Jack's excited. All right, that's all right. All in favor? Motion carries.
I like saving money.
6.5, discussion and possible action on the approval of hires, rehires, and stipends. Any, anyone have any clarifying questions? If not, I will ask for a motion.
I have a comment. I just want to...
Well, if it's a comment, why don't we do a motion first?
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the list of hires, rehires, and stipends.
My second.
Yes, Jack?
I just, I just want to say, I think, you know, I wish Kristin Raccio, whatever, I know her as Kristin Raccio, I wish her well in her new endeavors, and I think she'll be missed here at East Haven High School.
She will, she will. Yeah, she was my son's teacher over at, I think, when he was at the academy, I believe. No, Mollwood, maybe, Mollwood. That's it. Any other questions or comments? No? If not, I will ask for an I-vote. All in favor to approve the list of hires, rehires, and stipends, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carries. Future agenda items, will we be having a workshop to, for the K through five to present testing?
Yes.
When will that be? Is that next meeting?
That would be October 12th.
October 12th.
I am not going to be at that meeting.
Okay.
It is senior night where my daughter plays soccer.
Okay.
And so, I was invited to go that evening and you get to do a special thing with your senior. So, Jennifer Murray is making that presentation. We certainly can have it on October 12th or the following meeting after that, which is October...
Or we could just do it on a night that's not a meeting. I mean, a workshop could be scheduled at any time.
It could, it could. I thought this evening worked really well.
I mean, literally, anytime.
I thought this evening worked really well.
So, Jen's presenting the elementary one?
Jen is going to be presenting the elementary one.
Okay, well, then, if long as you're fine with it, I think we're fine with it, correct? Everyone?
We'll miss you, though. Enjoy your senior event and parent duties and...
So, other than that, it looks like our next regular board of education meeting will be October 12th. As I said at the last meeting, if anyone would like a subcommittee meeting, to please contact either myself and/or with the superintendent and Melissa to get an agenda put together. But I just, I don't want to just schedule, subcommittees to schedule them if no one's going to show.
Just, no, the 13th, 14th, and 15th of October, I'll be away, so please don't schedule anything.
Where are you going? Anywhere good?
Ocean City, Maryland, for a bed event.
Oh, okay. All right, so at this time, then I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.